I'd like to call the meeting order. January the fifth. Let's start with the pledge. Pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ward, go aside.
Yep.
Approve the agenda?
I need to approve the agenda from January twenty five meeting.
Second. All in favor? That's the last meeting. I'd like to approve the minutes of December eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four. Second. All in favor? Okay. Towns Board of Superior Weekly up eight.
Yes. I have one. Oh, there it is. Okay. First is to let the board know that we are in the process of trying to get the zoning board's appeals back together. Looks like we may have a case or two coming our way. With your approval and support, we'll reach out to people that were laughs on it, spend a couple of years to see if they are interested. And then we'll advertise it and a couple of people from the public show some interest just from kind of hearing, I think, what's going on in land use that have come forward. But we'll reach out to them first.
Well, I think what we could do is advertise it now.
Yep.
Get the people's names in. And obviously, we give first dibs to people that were on before.
Okay.
And we get ahead of game.
So anybody interested in zoning board will let me know. Don't mind Dan, he's gonna save my day.
Could've tried.
Oh, budget update. So tonight, we saw on the agenda, we reviewed at five, that we're gonna go over the general government municipal management budget tonight. Tom and myself, Lord and Jason have submitted our local departments, and it's the first time the board sees it. So we're gonna do that. My plan was next Wednesday, the fifteenth, to have the transfer station present his budget with the liaison to the full board. And then the twenty-second would be the roads. So then the twenty-ninth would be the fire department, the rest of public safety and any miscellaneous. See how we work with time as far as other departments, committees, we'll start talking about social services. We need to figure out where and how the Warren Finance fall into this, which we should get into good detail about when we go over an email that we got from the chair to better discuss. Excuse me for one second. Jason, you have your laptop?
Um, yeah.
Because we could email that to Jason and Jason could probably get into it.
That might be quicker.
Thanks, Jason. All right, so that's.
Is IT side in for us?
Try spending all day with him. Keeps us entertaining. All right, so that's what I'm thinking for budget as far as department heads. And if you guys don't have any issues with those dates, then I'll reach out to Warren Finance and department heads and let them know. We did get a sheriff log for the month of December. Happy to say it's fairly short. They do start by telling you that Deputy Samborn's cruiser was outside of Acton and Shapley for eleven hours during the month of December. Ten of those was to cover patrol shift when Bedford had the death of one of their officers. So York County covered, so that was ten of the eleven. On December first, Deputy Samborn arrested a seventeen-year-old water road juvenile on Chief Simon Ricker Road in Shapley. Turns out that the individual was operating a stolen twenty twenty-four Chevy pickup truck. He went on, appears to have stolen that from Patriot Subaru of Saco, along with several other vehicles. At seventeen, four different branded vehicles. What about that? Anyways, he was eventually transported and booked in his at long frequent on Portland. On December fourth, Samborn investigated a domestic incident on a home at on Buzzell Road, and the individual was arrested for aggravated domestic assault, strangulation, actually. Also, on December fourth, deputy was advised by dispatch that there was a violation of conditions of release regarding an eighteen-year-old male who was found in active fleeing from deputies. On December seventeenth, Samborn arrested, or assisted Sanford PD at a home on Deering Ridge Road in Shapley looking for an individual that was wanted for domestic violence assault. He was eventually located and arrested. On the twenty-second of December, deputies responded to a home on Town Farm Road in Shapley for reported disturbance. And they learned the male and female were in an argument, and the female was in possession of a firearm. She made some pretty strong accusations and was going to use that gun. They were able to put a yellow flag process in place and save the day. December twenty-third, York County Sheriff's Department was advised that the New Hampshire State Police were chasing two burglar suspects at an elementary school in New Hampshire. They chased the vehicle through numerous bordering towns and had to use the tire deflation process. The vehicle went through Lebanon via two oh two Rochester, it did go through Acton. That's why it's showing up on our list. The driver, forty-eight years old, from Limerick, was arrested, charged with eluding, driving to endanger, being fugitive, and many other charges. But they let him out on a three hundred dollar bail. And then on the twenty-ninth, Deputy Carr responded to another home on Simon Ricker Road, different home, from out of control eighteen-year-old female who was transported for evaluation. That was your most notable for Acton, Shapley in December. I think the last thing that I wanted to tell you about was that the planning board is going to have a site walk on Thursday, January sixteenth, at four o'clock. Looks like they have an application for greatest practical extent for tax map one fifty-three, lot twenty-seven. And that is it.
Good. Well, liaison, please, Tom.
Yes. The the towns audit, fieldwork is complete. I believe the samples have been drafted. I had a chance to review them. And I believe they consider them to be complete. We're waiting on the school, which has a few loose ends.
Yep, they said it was close to completion.
They'll hopefully have that concluded, and I hope that we'll have those financials shortly. We've got the town report already drafted, so we'll just be able to drop that in, get it printed, and get it distributed shortly thereafter. We've had some efforts to move some money around to take care of cash needs at the school and at the town. We're still in good shape. We've got, we haven't had to, we've never had to actually draw into the three million that we have with individual treasury securities. What we're doing is using that Wisdom Tree available rate treasury fund as a fund that is used to maintain a proper cash balance in the town's primary checking account. So that's all working well. And today I had an opportunity to meet with the new AMA director, we're gonna hear from him in a little bit, and I think he's doing a great job, by the way. Thank you, David. I think there's some pretty exciting things going on there. I believe that's it.
Okay. Ed?
Nothing on Mary Grant, nothing on animal control. Transfer station, we're gonna hit a little bit later. With Skidsteer update. The only thing I want to say is stickers are due now, new stickers for twenty-five up there. And they are enforcing the stickers. So no sticker, no doubt. So they're pretty diligent about doing that, so. That's all I got.
The updates on this fire department, I have met with the rec director a couple of times on updates. I believe she said that she pretty much has games scheduled and ready to go to release, but she hasn't released those yet. And just a reminder that everything that the director and the committee is doing, some of it may be new. All of it is with the intention of improving the program and making sure that it's successful for the children in the future. Conservation and Forest Committee, I met with the chair a couple of times to talk about some budget discussions that'll be coming up when it comes up, folks. Some things to talk about then, but yeah, they've all gotten the budget set. And I did do an opportunity to attend the planning board meeting last week, because I was here.
John?
School department starts their budget deliberations tomorrow. Planning board just has a couple of developments in front of them. And I don't have anything for the cemetery.
They actually, if I can add, they just rescheduled the meeting in January, so it can be a Friday night, so remind me to look it up and tell you what it is.
Oh.
She's just scheduled it today.
Okay.
Roads, we have an A road committee meeting scheduled, as far as I know. I've been in contact with our road commissioner, kind of going over his projects and stuff, going well. And municipal grounds, just signed the contract, not contract, the
Driveway permit?
driveway permit for the rec field. And survey goes over here doing the surveying the other day for this whole thing here, so with the church. That's it. Okay, department head, committee chair, deets. Director of Technology.
I'll wait for you to say those words.
Sounds pretty important.
Nah, just a position. Good afternoon, Dan Crapitz, Director of Technology. There's been several requests, comments, suggestions from both the board and the community at large, that I've heard, about getting the screen on our recordings. So I have four different options to do that. The first option is, I spoke to Town Hall Streams, we can simply refocus the camera in the ceiling to include all of you and the screen. That's the preferred option because there's no additional fee for that. The downside that I see to that is that the committee or board that's up here won't be as visible in the camera. But that's a freebie, we can try it. I can have Town Hall Streams reposition a little bit, and we can play with it and see how it works. Second option we have is we can replace that existing camera. They have newer cameras now that have two lenses in them. So one would be focused on the committee or the board, the other would be focused solely on the screen, and then we'd have basically a picture in picture.
Two split screen or insert?
I think it would be like the insert, so the border committee would be full screen, and then there'd be like a quarter of the screen or an eighth of the screen down on one quarter, that would have the screen on.
It would have this.
Yes. Yes. The downside to that is that's going to be there regardless if you're using the screen and off. You can turn it on and off as we go.
I'm not sure if it would be lighting up also, for them to be able to decipher what's being projected.
So one of the questions that I have for Eric, our Town Hall Stream guys, is can we make that the main screen? And then take the border committee and put them in the smaller window, which I think it should be possible if we wanted to do that. Our third option is we can just schedule a videographer, so that would be Virginia or me. We sit in the back of the room, and we know when the video's gonna be used or when the display's gonna be used. We put it on an SD card, and then when I edit the video, that will show up on the YouTube video only, it will not be on the live video. That's the downside to that, is you won't see it live during the actual meeting. And then the last option I have would be to make one of our three cameras available to Town Hall staff. When we know we're gonna have a screen presentation, someone can set it up, just focus it on the screen and walk away. My suggestion is to go with my first option, just see if we can refocus the camera. We'll try it for a couple of weeks, I know the planning board using the camera almost every single meeting. I know we're getting into budget season, so Warren Finance might be using it, or we might be using it in this meetings as well. So I'd like to do that first and see how it works, and see what the screen looks like, and see if it says.
If you've got the camera, or if you've got the device with two cameras in it, can you toggle between them based on?
I don't think you can toggle between them, I can bring that back to my contact.
That might be a nice option if we know we're gonna be using the screen for an hour.
But if you're gonna be stuck with, if you're gonna be stuck in a small window.
No, I'm saying completely. In other words, if we're making a presentation, shut off the camera that is doing.
I don't think we can do that, no.
Oh, okay, all right.
So another option that I came up with, which Town Hall Streams did not like, was just to put a simply second camera here. And then you turn it on when you want to use it. We didn't get that far into that discussion as to whether that would be part of the live feed or not, if you could bounce between them and maybe bouncing that in for between two recordings.
Is there any chance you could pursue that further? Because like none of these, I feel like all these options have some drawback of either it being too small for people to see, or the extra work, like.
Right. The advantage to it being too small as it is, you could always blow off your screen. You can double-click the video on the screen, it'll go full screen for you. Still won't be huge, but it'll be more visible.
I just, I can see a lot of residents coming back and saying that it's still too small for them, and that's how it does not work, if that's something issue.
So I think it's worth a try to refocus, it's not gonna cost us anything. If we go with one of the additional cameras, you're looking at an additional fifty dollars a month for Town Hall Streams.
How much, how much of that? Just refocus.
It depends, depends on the screen you have, you can always double-click it and make it full screen on whatever screen you're using.
No, I mean, right now, it's catching about half of that screen.
I couldn't tell you off the top of my head, give or take maybe the bottom third of it.
Yeah, so it's probably not, because still be able to see me, someone sitting there.
So if we readjust the camera focus as it is, we would most likely have to reconfigure the room a little bit, maybe move you guys back a little bit, or something like that, so we can see everybody.
Have you gotten enough feedback to kind of evaluate these options, given this feedback in comparison? Maybe just one or two options to consider?
Yeah, absolutely, I could do that for you.
Let's do that. Does that sound right for everyone?
Jennifer, you're going above and beyond. Look at the screen right now, and that's what it looks like.
There you go.
So even if you tilted it up a little bit, there's still plenty there.
Right, so I think what I'd really like to do is turn it right a little bit, so like if Lauren's sitting there, we can see Lauren a little bit better, and pick it up a little bit. And based on that, I think.
But you can't read that screen.
Right.
That's the problem, you can see it, but you can't read it.
You can zoom in on it if you're whole.
Yeah, if you know what you're doing. No, seriously, some people just, you know, they don't.
All right, so let me think about it a little bit, let me readjust the camera first, because that's no cost to us whatsoever, other than an hour of my time, maybe, right? We'll see how it goes. And then, depending on how that goes, any feedback we get, I'll investigate whether the second camera or the newer camera with two lenses would be a better option for us. And then we can talk about maybe putting the screen front and center. Unfortunately, that means if you're not using the screen, you're still gonna have a tiny little window for the board and the community that's sitting here.
So Dan, let me know what I can do to help. If we can, once we adjust it, we can just run a mock meeting.
Right.
You know what I mean, so we're not having to wait for them. I don't want to get through the whole budget season and not be able to see it, so you and I can do it. You know, move the camera, we'll run a mock meeting, see if we think it's any better, and then maybe just go with. Do you guys have a backup recommendation, so we can just move on to the next one? So we're not coming back?
So the first, we're gonna, we're gonna.
We're gonna try the camera.
First, we're gonna try to adjust the camera, then if we can't get it straight away.
Yep.
My backup plan would be just to set up a camera back there that's focused on nothing but the screen. You won't see it live, but you'll see it on the YouTube videos. And then I choose whether the screen is bigger or whether it's small.
Do we need somebody to operate it here when that happens?
As long as someone is here to set it up and turn it on, and turn it off when you're done, you don't have to do anything with it.
Well, there's a cost to that, and so as opposed to fifty dollars a second camera.
We already pay me weekly, we already pay Virginia weekly for videographer services, so it's not really gonna cost us anything extra, other than having someone else here.
Okay.
That's a good start. That's my backup to the backup as it is.
Thank you.
All right, let me take what I have, we'll realjust the screen and we'll go from there. Thank you very much.
Okay. Next, Dan. EMA director. Long up.
Ladies and gentlemen. I know Tom told me I have fifteen minutes, so I want to get along one at a time.
It was actually Jennifer's.
A little reminiscent. We, Tom and I, well, it's been thirty-five days since we all decided we were gonna create a program for emergency management at town of Acton. And so today, and I talked to Tom this morning, I'm gonna go through some of the many things that have happened already. And I'll be quick. Today I submitted four things. One is a draft of an ordinance for the town to basically establish the agency and set the authorities, and just like any other town has. So that when something does happen, in conjunction with the emergency operations plan that I'm writing as well now, and they go hand in hand, of course, there's no gray areas when it's time to do something. There's no discussion, everybody will be aware of what we're supposed to do. So that was one of the things I, I probably have a rating. The other thing was, yeah, we came up with the idea of having a registry for folks who need special assistance. Garden emergency, I submitted that today. Put a nice little picture on it, make you feel home. That's, that would be very useful to have as a database, it'll apply to the fire department. Of course, it's voluntary and confidential. I think it's very necessary, the county does it, some other towns do. I'm trying to make us as self-reliant as possible, instead of totally relying on the county, which is an excellent resource, obviously. But the more we can do, quicker it can get done. Because usually it'll take sometimes three days for under FEMA or the county or the state to respond, depending on what happens, so. Number three. I met with the Red Cross Community Disaster Program Manager here on Monday. And because I asked questions about, you know, the school being one of their registered or surveyed shelters. And she looked it up for me before she got here and found that it was, the survey was done in May of two thousand and fifteen. And that it was categorized as an independent shelter, meaning that they wouldn't, they would not support you. Which I, they don't know how it became that categorized that way, and I said, well, that needs to change immediately, how we do that. So she met me here, we discussed it for about forty-five minutes. She said, if you can talk to the school or someone who can verify that that building hasn't changed drastically as far as what they look at as far as requirements for being a shelter, we can circumvent that, because that could take months getting scheduled and all. So I spoke to Andy the next day, which was Tuesday, the facility manager. He confirmed nothing's changed. I let her know that that day. She's already put me in contact with what they call a mass care or sheltering manager. Who's gonna talk to me, I'm gonna tell her that, you know, verify that that is the case, and she's gonna change the categorization, and we can circumvent doing another survey. Which means Red Cross support is huge in the shelters, I mean, literally provide everything. Food, cots, the people who manage the shelter, and it's a phone call for me, basically, through the county or the red. So that's a huge benefit, and it's free. That's it. Number four. There's a system called Rave that the county owns, it's a Motorola platform. It's free to us, twenty-nine communities under York County, right now twelve are using it. When I found out what it was, I knew what it was, and when I found out about it, that the county provides it to the towns if they want it, for free, I made a phone call immediately, and I'm going to training with the person at the AMA building in Alfred Tuesday. He's already created an account for me, so that I can actually send out local alerts on Rave for Acton residents only. That's a huge benefit. And that's voluntary as well, you simply set up a profile like anywhere else. Voluntarily, how do I want to contact, an email, phone, text, whatever. And those alerts that, you still get the county if you choose to have those, but you can get alerts that we establish here in the town as well. That's a, that's a good thing. So that's already in place, on play. Good thing I numbered these. I've been working with FEMA, they've reorganized all of New England into one location in Connecticut with one person that I've been talking to. But I have a rapport with that person now. We're meeting, Will and I are having a phone conference Friday morning to finish some business that needs to be done, and that would be the end of that. They have an extension on it that got approved yesterday. I asked them to.
That was for the April storm?
Yeah. So that should be all put to bed on Friday morning. Today was the first, the county AMA has meetings once a month for all twenty-nine folks like me, a lot of them are fire chiefs from different towns. That happened today, because last month got canceled due to weather. CMP came in with fifteen people, and these are all the folks from the Alfred and other offices that when there's a weather disaster that takes down poles and everything else, these are the folks that manage getting that fixed. It's not the guy out in the bucket, but it's the people who manage all this. And they were there about an hour and a half and told us how they do that, and it was very interesting. And some of that I'm gonna use on the educational side to people that will help them and help them understand how that, now that I know how that works. So I'm not gonna go into details now, because I have fifteen minutes, so. So that's another huge thing, and education's gonna be a big part of this, in the implementation part, I mean, I'll get ahead of myself. Number seven here. I've got, besides the shelter, I'm gonna have what's called a warming and cooling center. And that can be, and Tom gave me a good idea today about asking the church, but we also have this building already in place. That's not an overnight shelter, it's strictly, Red Cross described it to me, we can do whatever we want with it, just know, you know, you don't have to add a kitchen or any of that. So it's up to us how we do that. What that means is, she said typically what happens, people come in during the day, because we mainers, and we charge our phones and socialize and stay warm, and then they go home at night in a cold house. She said that's what mainers tend to do, so. But right now, that doesn't exist. And that would be designated in the emergency operations plan that I'm writing. And I will speak to the folks at the church. Be good to have two locations. I did join, as I said I would, the Maine Association of Local Emergency Managers. It's an annual fee of twenty-three dollars and change, so it's well worth it. They worked with the state's AMA and wrote a very thorough manual in January this year for people who do this job. So it was work to me. That was an easy one. Okay, Will helped me out with the radio, and I'll be quick on this, but I knew there was, I saw a base station and antenna in the building. We weren't quite sure what the heck it was for, but when I looked on the FCC's website, I saw that that is not the fire department, it's the town's radio, which is typical in a town to have a frequency of their own like that for public works or whatever. And then Will was good enough to fill in on, basically during storms, on one of, one of both of those channels that we have. The fire department, Will, can communicate using that frequency, so you're not interfering with fire department frequencies, for obvious reasons. So Will was good enough to give me a spare radio that he has, so I can utilize that, which should be obviously why I would at least be able to monitor and talk to the folks if something like that was going on. So we didn't have to buy a radio, thanks to Will, and we tested it. Will and I tested it the other day, everything works great. And now I spoke to Southern Maine Communications, who maintains it, and I understand exactly how it's utilized. It has nothing to do with any fire department or the repeater on Blueberry Hill, it's totally autonomous, so that's good. Oh, yeah, so for the warming centers, what I want to do almost immediately when some money gets coughed up is, I got quotes from buyers, a main company, of course, been around forever, makes cots and such up north. Got a very good price on military cots that are aluminum framed, can hold like eleven hundred pounds. They store very small. And blankets. And to have on hand, as, in other words, on hand for the town, because there aren't any right now. And they would come in handy for the warming center, okay, people aren't gonna be staying overnight. But if you're in your house all night, cold, and you're coming here to warm up, you might need to lay down for a while. So at least that we have cots for ninety-seven dollars apiece, which is a great price. And blankets, I think they should be here, or be able to be here. So we have the money, or the cost on that, which is very low. And we talked today about doing probably two dozen, the price is the same, they're ninety-seven, ninety apiece, which is, because we're a town organization, so it's and we won't pay tax, of course. Let's see. Oh, yeah, the website, because this just happened. Thanks to being put in contact with Dan, yesterday, I was dating him. He's already got, and this website's gonna be very useful for the educational side and helping people take care of themselves more, too. He's already put a page or a tab under departments for emergency management, which is already there. Put up some temporary things, you know, to make it look nice, I'll be, he's already given me access to it, which I'll look at tomorrow. And I'll be managing and populating that with all kinds of good things, information. There's gonna be training, the county will give us. give us, I'm going to CERT training, which is Community Emergency Response Team, this month with, with the county EMA down in Alfred. They will come up here in the future and train the volunteers, which I'm gonna solicit to, to be on the Community Emergency Response Team. And those same folks can help out, let's say if we got activated shelters or warming center, right, just someone to be here, and I'm sure it's, you know, always the same people, or a lot of us, which is good. So that's going on as well. So by the end of January, I'll, I'll have that certification from that FEMA course, which then they will, and there's no charge for them to train us here. And I think... I met the deputy, the director and deputy director down at the county's EMA today, Art Cleaves and Megan Arnold, I think. And then I had some real quick suggestions, requests, questions, as I labeled it on the sheet you have. One of those I already mentioned, which is to purchase those two items as soon as you can, because I'm sort of here, since it's winter. There's a county, York County Mutual Aid Agreement, which I, was one of the things I sent, and they, they asked me from the deputy director through one of the chiefs, if we could please get that signed. It's a mutual aid agreement for all the towns in the county, kind of a no-brainer, where we all agree to help each other if asked, you know, so you have that. That, I think that, that's a good thing to get signed quick, along with the supplies. And if there's a list, and I might have to go to the fire chief, I don't know, but probably not, the list of mute, whatever mutual aid agreements we have, so I can incorporate that into the emergency operations plan, I, I, I'm, I'm working on that, that's gonna take a while, but I'm well into it, so. And what, what that part does, that only comes into effect if, if an emergency's declared by the federal government, the state, the county, that includes acting. And the ordinance is why that's there, because then that says, okay, if that happens, you know, or if it's declared locally by the board, and decide you wanna do that, let me look at the ordinance. Then that operational plan becomes active, no other plan. Okay, and, and what's in there is, basically it's telling the departments that have responsibility to participating things, all the way down, including animal control, the health officer, school, go, of course, the fire department, all of us, it spells out what each of those folks' responsibilities and roles would be if that happens, regardless of what type of problem it is, they're all true to the same. Of course, the C is a big one, but the activity is, the roles and responsibilities, so that's what the emergency operations plan is. All this is gonna be on the, that website that we're gonna start working on. We'll be doing a lot of good stuff, we'll be, a lot of training for townspeople, because the smarter we are, because you gotta, you gotta try to make yourself totally self-reliant because it needs the supplies and all throughout the seventy-two hours, even the county says that, you know, the basics, so you can take care of yourself, because it can take, excuse me, not long to get the help with something bad enough, so, and, and it's good to be self-reliant anyway, and that's, that's my goal. And the last thing is, with the one-minute warning, is, what I have found out is, I, I'm amazed at how much free help there is for a town like ours, it's unbelievable, that, and I agree on using it all, so. And it's all free, it's amazing, so, there's my story.
So, one question I have is on the cots, how many do you think we need?
Two dozen, he said a dozen.
Either a dozen or tw- it's the same price for two dozen.
So you're talking, uh...
So it's a eleven sixty-four.
Twenty-five dollars, are we gonna have to...
We, we follow policy, I was gonna mention that to him afterwards, so, we, we have a policy, anything over a thousand dollars, we just want you to at least look for another website or two that has them, certainly this one that you mentioned could end up being the best price, but you can just Google a couple more that are very similar, we'll take a look at it, and I hope you're gonna order right away.
Well, we, we just need three quotes.
Yeah, I saw the purchasing policy.
We don't necessarily have to be the cheapest one, we want quality, but we have to have something to compare to.
Make an attempt to look.
But this particular vendor was recommended by FEMA or...
I called the county, the gentleman who does logistics, and I said, who you get your cots from?
Yeah.
And he said buyers in Maine.
Yeah.
So I called them, and they gave, I was amazed, ninety-seven dollars for this.
So we get a couple more quotes.
Yeah.
But I, I do understand, I read the policy on, on purchasing, so I...
We make the fire department do it, so we're gonna make everybody else do it?
Yeah, everybody does. So we can, if you just bring three of those, we can get those orders as early as next week, and I just wanna add to the board, because I don't know if everybody knows this, but the original plan, it keeps saying the time limit, because you guys got so much documents via email, we sent it to them yesterday, we wanted to have, wanted you to have a chance to review them all.
Yeah.
He's coming back at the end of the month for a more lengthy presentation, we'll give you a chance to review all those ordinances, cross the Ts, Dr. Is, and, and we promise to give you a little more time, but you've done phenomenal.
I'm pretty sure in, in three weeks when I come back, I'll hold it is, and it should, the ordinance is, I keep that simple. And, and you'll see in red ink, that's like an universal change to be, or decision to be made, it's pretty obvious, right? Yellow is, hey, what about this kind of thing? So I think on the twenty-ninth, you know, hopefully you guys can hand that back to me, which will be pretty straightforward, and I can do the final, and then come April the town can say, let's do it.
Just to remind everyone, you've been at this for about five weeks now?
Thirty-five days.
Thirty-five days. I, I think it's impressive, the amount of work you've been able to pull together and get this organized, and in terms of dysfunctions, I think it's an incredibly important one. While I think Acton has been very fortunate, we've had some bad storms, but you look around the country and you've seen the kinds of emergencies that can, that can hit you, that's when this is incredibly important. And if you're trying to do, provide response without a plan, it's simply not gonna work. And so I think as a community, we should be very fortunate, feel very fortunate and supportive of this kind of work. I think it's very important, and Phil, I appreciate the work you've done on this.
I'm glad the town, you know, are making this a priority, it's, it's not rocket science, you know, it's just, it's an insurance policy, you can't do it and it's delayed. And, and just real quick, you know, you don't realize the hazards, but we got a drought going on.
Yeah.
Like if someone dropped a match today, forget it, we're surrounded by woods, we have dams that are very old, we have trucks that go down one oh nine carrying god knows what, that cannot, that doesn't just happen on I-95. You know, we don't think about these things, but it's too late when it happens, it's easy to fix, hopefully nothing happens before you get all this done.
Or ever does.
Or afterwards. Hopefully we never need it.
Or it'll be prepared.
That's exactly it.
Thank you, Phil.
Thank you.
Okay, we're down to old business, skid steer, bill of sale.
So as instructed by the select board, we put the old skid steer on municipal bid with a minimum bid of twelve thousand, we got one bid for twelve thousand and one, so it officially sold, the gentleman was very happy with it, paid by cashier's check, everything's been followed through, just needs signatures on the bill of sale that the attorney draft did, all is as is, where is, no guarantees, we'll send him a copy tomorrow and...
Do you need a motion?
Yes.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we authorize the sale of the skid steer in the amount of twelve thousand dollars to Warrick Hill Orchard's.
Twelve thousand one.
Twelve thousand one.
Yeah, well, the one was, well, it's, he did pay twelve, the dollar went to municipal bid.
Okay, all right. So, twelve thousand, twelve thousand and one. Motion's been...
Second, all in favor? That worked out pretty well.
Yes, we learned a lot on municipal bid, and, or in all questions, yeah.
Well, you think about it, if we just put in the paper on here, we wouldn't have got that person to go up and turn it. We've got about six weeks.
Yeah, it was, I mean, and some of that was on our end, and we had to get pictures and upload and figure out, it's quite a process to get approved, to post on.
I probably, I probably talked to half a dozen people on it, that called me, you know, that asked questions about it.
Yeah, we just listened.
I did talk to this gentleman, and, yeah, this first thing to me is, I'm the guy that's gonna be buying your skid steer. Okay, let's talk about it. So I guess he was pretty added in that he was gonna...
Well, I'm happy with the result.
Yep.
Yep. Got a type one, huh? This bitch.
Can you clear?
Oh, so I mean, it's yours?
No, there's more signatures.
Still that one, just like that.
Sorry, John.
I think we can live.
We're gonna get through that age.
A new business, Warren Finance, cheer, email.
Okay, so I sent Leslie an email on January third indicating that we had scheduled tonight's meeting for the thirteenth, oh, I'm gonna step back up, I sent her an email letting her know that we scheduled the budget committee meeting for municipal management tonight. She had asked about a meeting, an email she sent on the thirteenth that was, we communicated back and forth about getting her meeting scheduled in tonight, and then she had some concerns about the process of, of this budget, so I'm gonna read you the response and if you guys need to figure out, address it. So, thank you for scheduling the Warren Finance meeting, I'll notify the committee members. I am dismayed at the handling of the beginning of this budget season, it was my understanding that the Warren Finance liaisons, or the selectmen liaisons, and department heads will be meeting prior to the budget being presented. General government is scheduled for Wednesday, I am the liaison to this department, I have not been contacted by anyone to meet, nor has a proposed budget been sent to me to review, nor the information we discussed, trio reports, been forwarded. All this information is crucial in light of the fact that we had additional surplus close to a million dollars. I take issue with insufficient time to review and be expected to discuss these budgets without all pertinent information. The Warren Finance consists of dedicated individuals who volunteer a great deal of the time, their time, the residents and taxpayers elect these individuals to provide a second voice and to advise the select board. Warren Finance is ready, willing, and able to perform our duties. If the select board have decided to change the budget process, then a discussion is necessary. Perhaps the budget, the above situation is an oversight, if not, then there's lack transparency, which is unacceptable. It is my hope and is the form, Leslie Berlin. So before you address that, I just wanna let you know that I did meet with Leslie, and she did ask for some trio reports, which she now has.
Yeah, they were sent, yeah.
Yep, so she has that piece of it's done, Lauren and I have been working on a lot of different things, and I knew they had a meeting on the thirteenth, but she has a nap. And I have hard copies for anybody, I have a couple extra, I didn't print all of them because it's so big, some people like the computers, but if you want a hard copy, let me know. Rest is up to you guys.
Would you like to address that further?
Well, I mean, it just, my, my concern is that, I mean, we, we had instituted, you know, the select, the select board and Warren Finance did a new process last year, and that worked very, very well, I thought. At our first meeting, I asked the rest of the, of Warren Finance how they felt about that process, and they all thought it went well also. So, my understanding was that we were going forward with that same process, where the liaisons and the department heads would meet prior to the budget being presented. And, so, my question is, is that process, you know, what, is that process going to happen?
My, my recollection of the process last year, viewed as last year, is exactly what we're doing this year. I don't believe that I ever, as a liaison, and maybe other selectmen, could be called as, I never met with a member of the Warren Finance Committee to, in the process of developing a budget, which is what has happened. I had a meeting last, last week with Jennifer and Lauren to actually build the budget, and, which was, will then allow us today to have the, the department chair, in this case Jennifer and Alan Sis, present a preliminary budget to the selectmen for their consideration, not that they're gonna approve that budget today.
Because they haven't seen it.
They haven't seen it either. And for them to understand the scope of that budget, what might be necessary in terms of recommendations that have come forward for the staff, so that they could provide feedback to that. Similar to last year, we invited the Warren Finance Committee, which is what happened this year, so that you could hear all of that, and have an opportunity to participate and ask questions, et cetera. So what's happening this year is, to the best of my knowledge, exactly what happened last year. And the distinction is, the budget is prepared by staff. The role of the Warren Finance Committee, as I understand it, is to review the budget and make its recommendation on what the, the proposed budget is from the selectmen. Well, they haven't even seen it yet, so I'm not quite sure what the issue is.
And the role, the role of finance committee is to review the warrant in front of them, not the budget that's being proposed.
And last year, we, we enhanced that.
Last year, I met with Ed, and, with the fire department, and you and I made recommendations on changes, remember Ed? For, we made, before that was presented, I met with Ed on, with the fire department and with the transfer station, and...
That made...
I mean, Ed and I also worked a great deal with Robyn to develop his budget.
Well, and the problem with that, though, there's an issue with that, now it's great that you did that.
No, I'm gonna back up.
Okay.
We did agree last year that the liaison from this board, the liaison from the Warren Finance, would meet with the department head.
Yes.
As the three of us go over the budget, not necessarily develop it, but go over the budget, so they had it to take back to Warren Finance. That piece is missing this year.
How did we do it?
We did, we did the same thing, David, you, you and I, and we met.
We didn't create the budget, we just kinda...
No, and then we, we talked about it, any changes that, you know, we, we talked about what potential changes might need to be done, but this was all done prior to the budget being presented.
And maybe general government is, is different, only because that's the selectmen's budget. I mean, know that, you know, I mean, there, that is the selectmen's budget, I mean, I know that the selectmen oversee all of the budget, the roads, the transfer stations, but the day-to-day operation really is the municipal, who was the, who was the municipal liaison last year for Warren Finance?
I was.
And you, did you meet with someone?
I met with you and Tom for about two and a half hours. And again, this was not...
Before or after?
Absolutely before.
Okay.
And in fact, at one point, planning board came up, and we had spent enough time on the municipal, just, this is what's going on, this is what's happening, you explained things, that Tom probably didn't even, you know, and I remember a couple times you checked with the treasurer, is there are different things that come in?
Yeah, we made, I mean, we've had hundreds of meetings, I mean, this certainly wasn't intentional, I mean, it wasn't, wasn't intentional.
I just wanna clarify, yeah, I wanna clarify that, that we know what the process is going forward. I mean, like I said, you know, perhaps this was an oversight, a misunderstanding or whatever, but let's clarify that.
It was very, very...
I, I just have a philosophical point there, I think it's the role of staff to prepare the budget, and then to present that to the selectmen, get their input at appropriate time, someplace in there, to meet with the Warren Finance Committee. The point of, I think, what we did last year was, what we previously had done was, the budget was prepared, and then you met with the department heads, all, and you had your thoughts and questions, and somehow that needed to be assembled all together, and it was done in separate settings. And what we did last year was, let's get everyone together, so when the selectmen are asking their questions about the budget, and try to come to some conclusion about what we ought to be having in there, the Warren Finance Committee should be there as well. Let them ask their questions, let them talk to the selectmen, and that's, that was really the principal goal set last year when we put that process in place, and we planned to follow that issue. If the Warren Finance Committee members wanna have a meeting with the department chair, and whether the liaison from the selectmen is there or not, if you want that meeting, you should go ahead and have that. But it's, it's not something that, quite frankly, I feel is necessary, I'm trying to reduce the number of meetings and the back and forth, where we end up talking, but not talking to each other. And I'd like to get people in the room, talk about their issues, make sure we're all on the same page, and hopefully get to a point where we've got a budget, that everyone understands what's in it, the men are agreed, that they understand what's in it, so that we can make a decision, and then you as a committee can take your position.
I think having those meetings, liaison, liaison, and department head are what made it work last year.
And we plan on still doing that.
Yes.
We still, you know, but it's like tonight, we, I, I did, we had a meeting with Will tonight, okay? But there was circumstances, okay? We looked at Bill, there was a bunch of stuff we needed added on, definite, define, defining all this, it would have been a waste of our time for you and I to meet with him at that point, because there's some other stuff that's being added into it that's coming after the fact.
And then David, and, you know, you, and you said to me earlier today, we'll be having our meeting.
We will.
Yeah, so I mean...
And we plan on doing it, I think, Leslie, I appreciate, appreciate, appreciate the email, little short fuse, you know...
-we'll be having our meeting.
We will.
Yeah, so I mean-
And we plan on doing it. I think, Leslie, I appreciate, I appreciate, I appreciate the email, little short fuse, you know, I probably wouldn't go as far as you did, but we don't, we're not trying to be defiant to the Finance Committee.
Not at all.
We're trying to do what we did last year, we just haven't been able to get it yet. And we're just starting this process, it's a little, just jumping the gun just a tad, and we'll make it work.
And honestly, I mean, we, you know, you know, there are certain times of year that are busier than others, you know, we have a new treasurer that's doing her best, we have, that's learning the process, the new budget for the first time, writing the warrant for the first time. We have Mark Roy that's working with us closely for the first time. You've asked for five years' worth of history for all of these accounts, you know, we're balancing, you know what I mean? So it was just an oversight.
Holidays.
Yeah, no, and I understand, and Jennifer, I appreciate you getting that in.
But I know, but I just, I just, I mean, I agree with David if my point means anything. I mean, feel like I've done nothing but work with you guys and help and try and help. Email was short. I mean, that, you know, I mean, there was just, wasn't, you know, I mean, you read that over the weekend when you, when you answer emails and you're working 60 hours a week to try to get every department head and everybody what they need, when they need it, and you read that on a Saturday or a Sunday, and, you know, I mean, how about just a simple question?
The biggest thing is, is the select board, I think, is we're going out of our way-
We're trying.
-to work with you guys because we don't have to. You know, if you read the ordinance, the ordinance says what your job is. I don't care what anybody tells you differently, but you can read that ordinance. We've gone above and beyond saying, we are gonna work with you, just let us work with you. We will, we just, we'll, we'll get to that step, it's coming.
So regarding the, the, so let's just make a clear point from here forward. I mean, we were scheduled to do general government tonight, now I realize that Leslie has not seen it, but I have asked the treasurer if it has, you know, family at home to be here. I've asked Jason to be here. I would ask for your support to let me at least go through this tonight-
Absolutely.
-and then we will go, right, is that's okay to continue with that?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Can, can we have hard copies of it?
Yes, there's nothing here.
Well, the holidays, you know, all the, we're missing two, two meetings, this and that, we just don't want to get way out of, way out of schedule.
Well, no, and, and I appreciate that, Dave. We have a meeting on Monday, so we'll, we'll be looking at it, and if we have any, any questions, I can always-
Which budgets will you be going over on Monday? Not all of them.
The general government.
Just general government, okay.
It's the only one we have to complete, I mean, we're-
Yeah.
Yeah, so I mean, it's, so, you know, we've got, you know, you know, some other business to, you know, to talk about and redoing that. But I wanted to make sure that, you know-
Yeah, we'll, we'll make it work.
Our process is clarified, so that's it's all.
We're gonna make this work.
All right, thank you.
So I guess I just want to ask a quick question as Ray comes up. So knowing that now that they're going into the Warren Finance, oh, I'm sorry. We had, you had temporarily suspended the Warren Finance policy, so now, you know, so I want to make sure that I'm understanding as a town administrator what the process is going forward. So we got that email from wanting the five years' worth of requests. I don't know if the current Warren Finance all requested that, I don't know if it was one member or three. Does the board, am I waiting for a motion and a vote, knowing that a full committee wants X information, or am I taking it from any of the members, as long as they go through the chair? You guys need to give me the direction so that I make sure I'm following your instructions.
Leslie, did you got, have you guys had a meeting yet?
Yes.
You have, did you?
Yeah, we have, we have, we had a meeting back in October.
Yeah, okay. And, and the whole Finance Committee was asking for five years?
Well, Jennifer sent me what, what we were requesting.
Oh, she did.
I already sent it to her, but the question's going forward.
But she's saying for future, making sure she's got a policy.
I think the question is, if Jennifer gets a request from a member, should she be responding to that?
Send it to the member or does any become?
I'll be honest with you, I ask that we just be reasonable. If it's a simple request, then you can comply with that. Personally, I would say do that. If it's a request for five years with the actuals, I think that requires a lot of work, and I think the board should discuss that. And so I think it should come from the committee, and it should be made formally to the board, and the board can hopefully, you know, agree to do that. But if it's a significant effort, this is all on top of staff that already have full-time jobs, and I think it's our, it's incumbent upon us to just understand what that is. That would be my take on it.
I think what we do in most committees we have, you know, they want anything, they have a vote and whatever, so I would suggest doing that next time, and I guess we'll ponder it when we do it.
So at, at the end of Monday's meeting, for example, your committee makes the list of the things they want, and the chair will email it to me, and we'll just, honestly, we'll get it to the general board. It's gonna be a joint effort from the committee.
And we'll try to get you whatever you need.
Yeah, I mean, as far as the, the budget actuals for prior years, Jennifer sent me-
Good.
There is, in, in-
There's four years, that's far back as trio goes.
Yeah, there, there is some missing information, but, I mean, we can, we can back into some of it, you know.
Yeah, there's, I mean, some of that, you know, when the, when Mark Roy had the books, that information was just not there. It wasn't put in the trio, we knew it wasn't going to be. So there's gonna be missing information in there.
Yeah, so I mean, it's, I mean, it is what it is at the moment.
Right.
Good, thank you. We're all set with that?
Yes.
Okay. General Government, budget presentation.
Okay, so again, this is the first time the select board are seeing this, other than Tom and department heads, so we're just gonna go through it, and I'm just gonna go through it quickly, we're not voting on it, but hopefully give you information that you have from Monday's meeting. So the selectmen, the Board of Selectmen have not decided what increase staff will get. They are looking at the school, waiting to see what they do, in an effort to treat all the town employees the same. For the sake of moving some sort of budget forward, there's a three and a half percent increase. That was Tom's first recommendation. That can be adjusted depending on what vote the board originally takes, eventually takes, but you should know for this presentation, it's three and a half percent. So what you can't do is always take the 25 budget and multiply it times three and a half percent when it comes to these salaries. The selectmen, you can't do that because in 2025, the current year, we didn't run 52 weeks on a five-member board. You know, in the election, we had four members until the election. So these numbers for the FY '26 budget are for five selectmen, the current rate times three and a half percent. Clerk, security, and Medicaid are calculated on their own. Office assistant, there is an increase there from the $90,000 to the $1,1200. There are two positions of clerical wages. One is a deputy town clerk, tax collector, and one is the office assistant that works for both Lauren and I as needed. The town hall, staff work Tuesday through Friday from 8:30 to, eight to five, they work eight to five, so four nine-hour days essentially, so 36 hours. You will see that these two positions are at their current rates with three and a half percent hourly rate increase, and I do have one of them budgeted at 38 hours and one of them budgeted at 40. That doesn't mean that they're gonna work that all year, but when elections come, when tax liens come, when foreclosures come, when budget season comes, there are times that, you know, we need them to work a couple of hours on Monday, and I need that wiggle room in case it happens. Another perfect example is starting sometime in the end of the month, we're gonna have someone else trained on payroll and AP. You know, Lauren's kids get sick, something happens, there's gotta be somebody else that can do that. You can't do that during regular business hours with everything else going on. So remember, last year I requested that, one of them got cut down a little bit, but I thought, let's try again. So social security, Medicaid miscellaneous, there was a $250 miscellaneous line under office assistant, there was really nothing they would need, so I took that out. Director of, Director of Technology, this is our IT support, this is our website, this is everything that that position holds. So it's the current rate salary that he's getting paid times a three and a half percent increase. Unemployment is based on that. Workers' compensation, you know, you look at this line, and we'll revisit it next time we're all together. Lauren has worked very hard to pull the last three, four years' worth of workers' comp bills to look at what we've actually paid into mainness, which we've been communicating with them. We pay all of the Town of Acton's workers' comp. The school reimburses a portion for their employees. It's broken down by salary. This line has not been budgeted correctly for the last couple of years. That number that's there, $43,376, is the Town of Acton's portion. Remember, workers' comp rates also go up based on claims that are filed. It falls on the steps, somebody that's heard of the transfer station. We're gonna revisit this. Mark Roy, our accountant, who is helping us on the side, is out of the office the rest of the week. We took, put the number directly from the bill, so that number, don't let it panic you now, let it panic you after I get confirmation from Mark that that's correct. Health insurance, health insurance went up eight percent this year for main municipal, eight percent. That number that you see there, we have employees that had life-changing events that weren't currently getting health insurance, but when enrollment time came up, they took it on. We have a new hire that, at the, at the fire station, that took on family. That's the number based on the Town of Acton's personnel policy and what they offer. Medicare is obviously calculated based on wages. Other employee benefits, all of your main PERS, your longevity, PTO buyouts, this is all of the departments. Office supplies, we went up a little bit because like everything, it's just, everything's going up from envelopes to stamps, the very next one down. We send a lot of mail out, whether it's notifications of, you know, sidewalks or tax liens. Spend a lot of postage in the town hall. Heating, fuel is one area we felt like we could drop a little bit based on, looking at the last couple of years' trend. The FY 2025 year to dates that you see there are through the end of December, so those are accurate, but obviously winter's just starting, so interested to see what that line looks like at the end of January. Employee training, those usually bills start coming in in January because most, all of the certifications end in December, so, but we left that the same. Dues and memberships, accounting. So this is the line that we were paying Mark Roy, our accountant, out of. You can see we budgeted $67,000, we've lowered that to $45,000. So we have taken the amount that we pay him per month on average, we've gone a little bit on the high side, we've multiplied it times 12 months. You know, we, Lauren's doing a phenomenal job getting her training, but he's still doing all of our bank reconciliation, he's doing these reports. There's a lot of things behind the scenes that allows her to do more of the personnel, but we felt like $45,000 was a comfortable number for him. Legal, we left at $10,000, that's one of the areas that, you know, just not, don't know what we're gonna run into. Next section is audit, so we, we don't know yet what the next audit is. We, I think it was Tom's recommendation, they should have put in for a small increase. Drug testing, we have a few employees that are in a pool, and we don't know if one will get picked, you know, once a month, or if they don't get picked all year, it's something we have to budget for. Lean cost, we lowered, lowered a little bit, and that was just based on the trend. One of the other things about lean cost is that they're often filed in the next fiscal year, so your 30-day notices of postage will, will go out sometime before June 30th, but the actual filing has to happen 40, 40 days after that notice, so with that 10-day window. So we're filing them in the next fiscal year, so we were comfortable dropping that down. Alarm maintenance has gone up a little bit. We had to install some new motherboards in the bathroom for the ADT system. Electricity, we're not sure how, but we looked at the last four or five years, it's actually dropping here, so we were comfortable with a couple of thousand-dollar drop. Telephone, on the other hand, has gone up, so that's based on our current 12-month average. Building maintenance and repair, we looked at that trend as well, and we're comfortable dropping that by $5,000. Trio, however, the software that we pay for, for all of our cash receiving and clerk and tax collecting has gone up, so that's the increase. And that number, I think, where are we? That number, I think, will make more to the penny once we get an actual invoice. We're waiting for that. I think it'll be around 18,519, but this is just the first presentation. Equipment repair and maintenance, I'm not sure how we get to 5,035, so we made it 5,000. Lawn care is per contract, so that's not gonna change. Liability insurance, printing. This is advertising and town reports, combination. The land, that's what you approved at that special town meeting, that obviously was a one-time purchase, so we don't need to worry about that again. You are gonna see $35,000 in there for a municipal vehicle, and this is a conversation we have not had with the full board yet, as their mouths have dropped to the floor, but, you know, conversations that I'm having with the treasurer and with the department head, you know, we're looking at some, some very basic economy vehicles for, you know, $30, $33,000 and zeroing out my mileage account, the code officer's mileage account, and the treasurer's mileage account. The idea is that that one car stays at the Town of Acton, if the treasurer needs to go to the bank, she goes. If code officer has inspections, he goes. So that line is in there for discussion. Computer equipment, tax abatements and write-offs are all staying the same. Those are lines that you just can't, there's just no way of budgeting what it is. You see a large number for write-offs last year, the auditor recommended that, we had a bunch of old personal property from 2006 to '09, some of you might recall when they were taxing the Apple Valley campers down there. There was a point where they either had to pay excise tax on them, or they paid personal property. All of that was wiped off clean. The contingency fund has been removed from general government because, again, the Town of Acton approved an article that basically authorized the selectmen to use it in any department. So, you know, if the transfer station doesn't fall into municipal management, they wouldn't have been able to use it. So you're gonna see that in its own line elsewhere. Goat Hill is a small $500 donation.
Jennifer, maybe we could stop there and see if there's any questions before we go on.
I only have but one question. That new 1% deal the state put through for, yeah, yeah, where is that?
That is not in there.
Okay.
That's a good point. Lauren's taking notes and we'll add it to that.
I thought that much, should have been a special line for it, that's obviously where everything else was.
Yeah, nope, good catch.
Okay.
I don't see the-
Come on up.
Hey, John, Ray Lopez, hello. I don't see the EMA director.
Because what, EMA director is part of public safety. If you go back to last year's warrant, public safety included the fire department, the deputy contract, and the EMA. So that'll be presented at another budget. This is just general government.
Yeah, well, then he was part of the town.
Well, he's part of the town, but, you know, just like the transfer station is part of the town, the fire department's part of the town. Municipal management is essentially just the town hall.
No, 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 I was just wondering.
Yes.
Hello, Lee Robitour. Wouldn't you have further conversation about the vehicle? Are you gonna do an analysis of how much you spend on reimbursements and show the additional costs that it is and the cost of the vehicle for comparative purposes?
Yeah, absolutely. We just, you know, we didn't know as, as the three of us put all this together, if, you know, if we were just gonna, the board was gonna have to just take it out, but we are working on that presentation behind it.
The vehicle will stay on site.
On site all the time. It will sleep here.
If I heard you correctly, you said you have a pool of people for drug testing?
Yeah.
So not everyone is eligible to be drug tested?
No, no.
Why is that?
I believe that pool's very big anymore.
The Department of Transportation, Department of Labor set who we're allowed to legally drug test. All right, so I'm trying to do as quickly as I can.
Anything else? Anywhere else, any other questions?
All right, so the elections, there is a minimum wage increase that happened the January 1st, so you're gonna see, we went up from 61 to 7,000 on that. Register of Voters is all zeroed out, and Tom is gonna take over when we get to the town administrator line, but you're going to see that the town administrator position that I hold is the town administrator, town clerk, the tax collector, the registrar voter, and deputy treasurer. They put it all in one line, so it's not being paid out of five different places, so that's why you see it's zeroed out. The deputy, the treasurer is the current salary of the treasurer times a three and The deputy, the treasurer is the current salary of the treasurer times a three-and-a-half percent increase and possibility of merit increases based on training that he will accomplish. Social Security and Medicaid, office supplies, everything's staying the same, right down, you can see that we zeroed out the mileage and totals. Tom?
Yes, I think what will catch your attention here is the department head wages. The select board engaged, actually, Mark Roy's firm, to do a review of comparable wages at other towns that are comparable in size and scope to Acton, and what we found there was that our town administrator was in need of an adjustment to her salary, and so that adjustment was reviewed and approved by the board and has been enacted. That was partially compensated by the elimination of the registrar of voters, but as you may know, our town administrator, Jennifer, holds a number of position responsibilities in town. Would you quickly review those, Jennifer?
I didn't just say it. So town clerk, tax collector, registrar voters, deputy treasurer, town administrator. It takes those five positions with one benefit package, and that's the line.
Basically, what we did was we asked Mr. Roy to contact area towns and find out the extent to which towns, what is the compensation they're paying for those positions? In many towns, you'll find there are multiple individuals carrying those positions, and these are towns of comparable size to Acton. Some bigger, some smaller, but they're all about in the same range, and it was based on that information that the compensation level for the position was established, reviewed quite intensely by the select board, and arrived at and adjusted to her compensation, so that's the basis for that.
So we will include a copy of that spreadsheet so that you can see it. I just wanna reiterate that I was not included in that process whatsoever.
Just one question. When, when, when Mark Roy did the compensation analysis, did he include the benefit packages also in that?
Yes. And one of the other things I wanted to mention, and well, I think you'll see it when we get to the code officer. So salary increase there, remember, five thousand of that was the registrar that got moved over, so you'd have to subtract to figure out the actual increase. No other changes on, let's see if that line, Medicare office equipment stayed the same, and then we took out mileage. Assessing is going to be the, oh, that's gotta be a typo. All right, so we'll make that one of ten. If you are contracted equipment, that's your O'Donnells, your map online, all of those people, so that's flatlined there. All right, land use. So I don't think I mentioned this earlier, but this looks like a one-point-five percent increase, and I said continuously that the board move forward to three-point-five. In the twenty-twenty-five year, there were fifty-three pay weeks, and this year, this upcoming budget is only fifty-two. So if you take his current salary, he did get through, everybody got three-and-a-half percent. The numbers and percentages don't match because of fifty-three weeks versus fifty-two, but if you do the math out, I promise you it's accurate. Clerical wages is the current land use assistant, times a three-and-a-half percent increase. There is also a small merit raise possibility in there. Anytime we put these possibilities in there, that tells us that there's more training, cross-training that needs to happen, and we may need to compensate that for it. Doesn't mean that the employee's gonna get it, it means it's something that we need to keep in mind. You will see that the deputy code officer line is also dissolved from this department. It's from this, from his land use, we've put that towards the clerical wages, and Jason, as he sees fit, will use the best use of his, his deputy, possibly utilizing his current land use assistant. Social Security and Medicaid is all the same, office assistant, office supplies, training, no change there. The only other change is the mileage and tolls we took out. We just wanna peek at the contracted services, even though we have spent very little. We've got big projects for the start of the new twenty-twenty-five year, and Jason will be meeting with Warren Finance League. Azon did even more one-on-one of what that looks like, that he does intend on spending that down, the revamp of all of the zoning, so, to be determined, but right now, first look, has general government at a five percent increase.
At five percent?
Oh, no, you had to put, there was a one thousand that got changed to ten thousand, one typo in there we caught along the way.
Couple observations. Earlier, Jen, when you mentioned about how to proceed with the information and what the process is gonna be for you to do it, that's all covered under the policy.
Yeah, they dissolved it, they temporarily suspended that policy, several meetings ago.
Well, that's what I thought that I made, if you remember Tom, I asked that question.
I wasn't sure, Dennis.
And I worked on the website, and it's still there.
Yeah, it may still there, but there were minutes that, that show a motion, but I'll make sure the website. No, they definitely made a motion to temporarily rescind it, they may have put a date on it, but let me, let me pull it, but in any event... No, no. In any event, that is, we're gonna do what we can to get to the information, but I'll check on their actual motion, make sure the website's accurate.
Yeah, okay. The other thing is, is where the three-and-a-half percent comes from. What is the basis of that?
It was, it was a number to put in there without, it is a placeholder. It does not reflect anything the board has discussed. It is a little bit above inflation, as I understand it. I gotta go back and look at the inflation numbers, I think they were in the two-plus range, so it was just a number that I picked, Dennis, but it is, it is simply a placeholder. So we could say at three-and-a-half percent, what would that result as an increase in the budget? And then we can begin to talk about whether that's the right number, should it go up, should it go down, should we make other changes to the budget? What kind of increase do we want to have overall in municipal management? So everything's open for discussion.
Yeah, and I think we also got the, Lauren, the teacher staff got a four-and-a-half percent increase last year, social security was two-and-a-half this year, so he just chose a number in the middle until we can talk about it.
What we've already decided is, board, I guess, has already decided to give a half a percent. Cause that's what we're paying on the percentage of this.
Oh, because you're not paying the...
Oh, you're talking about one percent?
Yeah, well, he's, yeah. So the one percent, the one percent, the new requirement that we take out, he's saying you're, because you're not charging the employee the fifty percent, fifty percent of the burden.
So that's a half a percent increase already.
It's interesting, I wonder what the school did about that. The points, we'll discuss.
I wouldn't give it as a half percent.
Well, you have to, because it's a, if you're gonna give somebody, say, a three percent increase on their salary, and you give them a benefit of half a percent, then it's...
No different than social security, the way it comes out, they don't get it until...
I, I understand your point, Dennis, it's a valid point.
It's a benefit, and it's a one percent.
I didn't mean to cut you off, it's, it's right. The, the compensation budget's gonna go up by half a point, and according to what was plugged in here for this budget, another three-and-a-half, so a two or four, I got it.
So it'll be four.
Yeah, that's right. But that three-and-a-half in no way reflects any kind of position by the board.
So this is the first we've seen, like we said, seen this.
Had to start, had to start somewhere. So that is the first, so we'll, I'll sit down with Leslie and Tom, we'll review it from her standpoint, and then we'll come back to it, we'll put it on a future agenda, but you guys wanna get through all the departments, and then we'll go back and start looking at them, right?
Wait, I, I'm sorry, move on to...
The next item?
You're good?
I'm good. I'm good. Thank Ms. Lauren for her time, so she can hold her children.
Let me just talk a little bit about, just get some reaction from, from the select board. I think in setting a budget, it's important to set early on some goals, and the principal goal that I'm thinking about is the overall growth in the budget and the impact on the tax rate. And municipal budget is around forty percent of the total budget, as I recall. We've got about a five-million-dollar budget, the school's got a six-plus-million-dollar budget, so last year, the municipal budget actually decreased, and the school budget increased. At some point, we're just gonna have to bring those two together, and we'll have to do some forecasting on what the impact will be on the tax rate. I don't know when we're gonna see the school budget. That may be much later in this process. Typically it is, is it not, Jennifer?
Yeah.
It's almost towards the end of the process, but, so we're gonna have to do our best to continue to keep this budget open as we receive information from the school, to try to make sure that we're keeping the effect, the impact on the tax rate to as minimal levels as possible. I don't, I don't know how to set a goal beyond that, but to me, it's all about the tax rate. Any thoughts on that?
I agree, I think you're right on, right on topic. I know that you, we tried to do that a little bit last year, cause we ran into the same problem, we didn't get the school numbers in much later, and trying to figure out, you know, when we got those numbers, what adjustments we had to make, but I think at the end of the day, we're right, making sure that we provide adequate, more than adequate services, but also making sure people can afford.
At the end of the day, if you look at the inflation, we stay a percentage or so away from that as a goal.
You mean a drop of that, or rather, a drop of that, yeah.
We stayed within, you know, like, as a goal. But when we went through the budget last year, I thought we did well to be able to, you'd say, flatline.
Municipal, wasn't it?
Cut back on a few things here and there.
Yeah, we were down three percent.
Yeah, but obviously things change, but we, you know, a goal would just be just a little bit more inflation, that would be good.
I gotta tell you, when it comes to inflation, it is an imperfect measure, and I think many people who are trying to manage a household budget, which is all of us, when they quote an inflation rate of two-point-five percent, I think people are looking in the same way at that. You know, groceries are, every time we go to the grocery store, it's just going through the roof, and interest rates are going up, so inflation rates are important, but when you've got the kind of dislocation happening in the economy that we have right now, you know, these employees are trying to support their family, and you need to be cognizant of what the real underlying inflation is and take that into account for people. That's my point of view.
Oh, no, you're right, you're a hundred percent right, just as a goal. You know, you start looking at that number, I know one year we went off to social, which social security did, when that popped.
Yeah, well, when it was up, they said, let's, let's piggyback that.
Yeah, so we kinda used the inflation, the social security thing, and we just kinda went with it, but I think what we've been doing is, the role is just going down and just doing good financing.
I think also, as I observe, we have a fairly healthy turnover rate, and it's very hard to find people, and seeing the consequence of turnover and the impact it has on operations, thinking about some of the positions that have turned over, it's expensive to have turnover.
Just the training, training side of it alone.
And some of it is just the world today and the economy today, but some of it has to do with perhaps the pay scales, and we just have to keep an eye on that.
Well, and a lot of it had to do between, you know, the inflation going crazy, but I think probably some of the wages over the years had been bumped and they should have done it.
Yeah.
Then you're playing catch-up, and when you do it, like we did, you had to play catch-up fast, and I think we're doing well at trying to make sure we stay competitive. So, Lauren, thank you, I know you wanna skip over, so, wait for us.
I'm going with it.
Okay, fines, violation letters.
All right, so I asked, I put these together so that Jason was still here. We had an executive session to discuss these, the letters are all drafted, just gonna give the mathamots and Jason can give a quick overview, but essentially, these three properties have had violations by the land use, and pursuant to the ordinance, and the particular section is referenced, the board of selectmen have to set some sort of penalty in order for these to be resolved, so. The first one is tax map two-twenty-seven, lot ten. This is a violation for twenty-five hundred dollars, and there, as I understand it, there was no growth permit or permit for the property?
It was a full house, that's, it's a house that's being constructed, full-size house without a permit, without a permit.
Any inspections?
No permit, no nothing, no inspections. The individual actually knew his permit expired in twenty-seventeen and he decided he was gonna build anyway, so. So he, the select board went with the max fine on that for the negligence on the property owner.
Is there gonna be efforts to correct anything, or is everything all right?
So, he knows about this, he, I've also notified him that he will not continue building, or will not get a permit until he, it's, the structures, has a structural engineer review it, because there's multiple issues that I saw on, that I can't, I won't even issue a permit for.
So you've red-tagged it?
Yeah, yeah, and I haven't had any contact with him since the holidays, and me and Jen, I just, when we met last, we were like, let's get through the holidays first, then we'll give him the fines.
And, and the letter, I mean, is well-written, but at the end, it very clearly says that, you know, that has to be remitted, and that no further permits issued, land use activities allowed to proceed, property remains in violation until it's been resolved. So we'll send these out certified and look for the best.
Should I make a motion?
Please.
Okay, and, we ready for a motion?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, make a motion to assess a fine in the amount of two-thousand-five-hundred dollars to the property owner of tax map two-twenty-seven, lot ten.
All in fair?
Okay, so while you're signing that, we'll move on to the next one, which is tax map one-seventeen, lot fifty-seven dash two. This violation was regarding mineral extraction.
So this was an individual who started harvesting or extracting gravel. When I noticed it, there was a significant amount of damage done to the area, told him to immediately stabilize the area and remove the equipment by the end of the weekend. He did that, he is, so we are currently working with him, cause he's gonna be trying to go in front of the planning board to receive a mineral extraction permit, initial use permit.
Does that stop too, or it says, or maybe it's...
He's not doing anything. If he doesn't pay the fine, he doesn't go in front of the planning board.
So that one was also twenty-five hundred?
That was also twenty-five hundred.
So if he doesn't get a permit, there'll be an obligation to restore the property?
Hundred percent. He will be doing re-vegetation, plant and everything like that, yeah.
Great. Make a motion to assess a fine in the amount of two-thousand-five-hundred dollars to the property owner of map one-seventeen, lot zero-five-seven dash zero-zero-two.
Second. All in fair?
Okay, and our third one surrounds tax map one-oh-one, lot eight, and this had something to do with a deck, if I recall.
An individual, he made, he got a permit to redo a deck. In conversation, he asked me if he could redo his dock. He didn't just redo his dock, he completed a whole patio from his deck at his house, all the way down to his dock, and then he proceeded to put a permanent dock in the water with concrete piers, not allowed, it's not allowed through the state, not allowed through the town. It was more of, let's, he just didn't, you know, understand, but you can't, you know, one of those things.
Does the state get involved with that at all?
I didn't involve the state, I involved a software recorder, because it is a, they are also a permitting authority in there, so they, I sent them a copy of the violation, and they plan to also pursue. He is also required to remove all the structures that were not permanent and not allowed near the water, so he gets the fine and has to remove all the nice stuff he built.
And it was, this one was five hundred dollars.
I just wanna thank you for following up on this, following through and taking this action. I think it's important to, and to have this kind of, you know, discussion, the community understands these are important regulations that need to be followed.
Thank you, Tom.
All right, I'd like to make a motion to assess a fine in the amount of five hundred dollars for tax map one-oh-one, lot eight.
Second. All in fair?
And we'll get those up in the middle, Tom.
Now, is this stuff that you're gonna have to go back, like, with the dock there, make sure it gets done? What happens if he doesn't do it in a certain amount of time?
So he, that he'll be, violation, he'll be in violation again. So that was one of the things that we didn't put in the thing, was a certain timeframe. That person, individual, understands what he has to do, he's also talking about selling the thing, if he sells it, person's gonna have, no matter, no matter what, it's coming up.
The first one?
No, the, the dogs, the dogs. So that one, so, yeah, I'm hoping that everybody, and he's up as soon as possible, I guess, I don't, you know.
We're gonna revisit it.
Yeah, so I'm gonna give him thirty days. If I don't see him in thirty days, then there'll be another letter going out. That's, we'll pretty much state that he's in violation, if he continues to, you know, to, you know, not follow through with this, then there's gonna be more, more actions.
It really, it really, it's not, we don't, I don't think anybody likes finding anybody anything, but these were situations where, that we had to do what we had to do, and we wanted to do what you did.
There has to be consequences, it's not following the ordinance, especially when you know that...
And they all do, especially the one with the house. He had a permit. Yeah.
He talked to the enforcement office beforehand, he was informed, so it was deliberate.
So we actually, me and Jen actually met with the individual, he was talking with Jen, he was talking about a building permit, and then Jen called down to my office, asked me to bring up his folder. I went through the folder with him, and in front of Jen, I told him, yeah, your permit expired in twenty-seventeen.
You must stop.
You don't have a permit, don't move forward.
He wasn't even close.
So he was deliberately...
And then, I was just driving, and I looked up into the woods and just see this big truck.
Pretty noticeable when the leaves disappear.
Hopping out of the trees, so.
Oh, thank you, Jason.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Resignation.
Robert Anderson called me today to let me know that he will no longer be able to serve in the capacity of constable, and asked that that be all I shared, that a resignation will be effective immediately.
I wanna thank Bob for what he's done over the years and years.
Many years.
Many, many years, yeah.
Do a little something for him.
Yeah, hope so, yep.
And I'll put together posting, and we'll get advertising for new hospital.
I'd make a motion, we accept Bob Anderson's resignation.
Oh, sorry, can I?
All in fair? Okay, animal welfare, agreed.
Okay, so we have an animal welfare society agreement, this is with the Kennedy Munk Shelter, does not take effect until July. Shelter, uh, does not take effect until July first of twenty twenty-five, um, it is for the exact same amount of last year, which is thirty-eight ninety-nine sixty-six, asking you to sign it earlier because, um, getting wind from birdies that, uh, they may start limiting the amount of towns that they enter into agreements based on space and, and staffing, uh, so you can make the motion with the, um, the clause that it's approved at town meeting, that municipal management has approved at town meeting.
We'll make a motion as read.
There you go.
With the clause.
With the clause. Okay. Second it.
All in favor? Good.
That's what I'm saying.
Well, I mean, I'm trying to, I, I know what you meant.
That's why I passed it off. I heard, I heard.
Tom knows what he's doing.
I was in this way. Yeah, there we go. I think I signed the right block.
Where, where is this thing? What's the matter? Oh.
I think it's right there somewhere.
Oh, I signed whatever.
Some pictures of it. Oh, boy. We all good? Oh, he's still signing. Yeah, he's upside down.
That's her, that's her picture, is it on the phone?
Yeah.
Is that her picture on the phone?
Yeah.
She called me one day, I couldn't figure out why the dog was.
Okay.
Tom?
It's on the calendar.
Oh, it is?
Yeah, yeah, she put it on the contest, they put it on the calendar. Medical reimbursement, bill and fees.
Uh, so in two thousand and eighteen, we signed a contract with Medical Reimbursement Services, um, they are the billing company that, um, takes care of all the billing for ambulance, um, ambulance runs. Uh, they have not had an increase since two thousand and eighteen. Their rates are set, um, based on the state, based on insurance and based on Medicare, and they are requesting, um, a dollar increase per mile, fifty dollars, um, for an A zero four-two-nine code and sixty dollars for a four-two-seven code, which just depends on the type of, um, type of level of care that's received. So it's a minimal increase, essentially, like I said, it's a dollar per mile and, um, fifty dollars and sixty dollars depending on the type of level, so it's, they need your permission though. Um, but again, the state sets it that they're supposed to be at two-hundred percent per Medicare, so they're really regulated by the state, we're at the minimum, they're looking to go up a small amount.
Make a motion to, uh, implement the, implement new medical reimbursement billing fee rates as presented.
Second. All in favor?
Do you want this signed, Jennifer?
No, you don't have to.
Okay.
I think it's pretty impressive, I mean, seven years, in a few places, I mean, that's kinda, and then only to go up a dollar.
Yeah, any public comment?
Jake, do you have one, one minute real quick?
More or less? Yep.
Something I wanna clarify that is important. On, on, what I was referring to, the emergency operations plan, which only is effective if there's a declared emergency, what's important is, and I mentioned this earlier, is that all, all the department heads or whoever has a responsibility in that document is, I'm gonna just write up a draft, and I, I don't know what I don't know, and I'm not gonna dictate anything, so the people, the department heads and many other job descriptions,